Yes, sir.
All right, we're gonna start. We might be working on chairs for another, a while. Welcome, everyone. Good afternoon. This is the beginning of Legislative Day 11, the work, the first work session for Legislative Day 11. And we're gonna start off, we have several appointments today. I'm gonna start with Councilman Marks' appointment to the Baltimore County Community Repair and Reinvestment Commission. And that's Mr. John Torch. I think, is Mr. Torch here today, or online? Do we know?
I can...
Okay, Councilman Marks, did you wanna...
Yeah, thank you very much. Some of you may be familiar with the Daniel Torch Foundation, which is run by Tony Torch. They're based in Perry Hall. They do an outstanding work with substance abuse, both trying to help people who are dealing with substance abuse, but also with those who have recovered, moving them back into the community. So my appointment, John Torch, has been very involved with this group through his mother. He's a stand-up person, very open-minded, very fair. I think he would do an outstanding job serving on this commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Marks. Next up, we have Councilman Patoka's appointment to the Baltimore County Community Repair and Reinvestment Commission, Ms. LaShawn Scroggins. Is Ms. Scroggins here today? She's online. Well, welcome, Ms. Scroggins. Councilman Patoka, did you wanna...
Sure. I...
Introduce Ms. Scroggins.
Yeah, so I'm really pleased to have Ms. Scroggins serve on this board. She has a really outstanding background, lives in the 2nd District, and had a really good conversation with her maybe a week or two ago. And she seems just well-suited for this position.
Would I please, Ms. Scroggins, if you are stepping up for this position?
Yes, thank you. I am a Baltimore County resident, and I'm honored to serve in this capacity that provides an opportunity for me to make a positive impact in the community. I have over 30 years of public service experience, ranging from licensed and foster home and adoptive homes in Baltimore County, managing child protective services in Baltimore City, developing federal child support policy, and managing a billion-dollar portfolio of contracted services for the federal government. Between my experience in citizens negotiating and executing contracted services for over 100,000 unaccompanied children, and drafting and analyzing and interpreting federal legislation, regulations, and policy, I'm confident that I can work collaboratively with the other members of this commission to make decisions in the best interests of the constituents in Baltimore County. So I am grateful and appreciative for the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Ms. Scroggins, thank you for stepping up to be on the commission. Any questions for Ms. Scroggins? Thank you. All right, thank you for being here today. So next up, we have a, an appointment from the administration to the Community Repair and Reinvestment Commission, Mr. Omar Tony Savory. Is Mr. Savory with us? Mr. Savory, welcome. Good afternoon, you wanna come up to the, to the podium here? Not the podium, the, what do we call that, the desk?
Witness chair.
The witness stand.
Hot seat.
The hot seat. Okay. How are you today?
I'm doing well. Good afternoon.
Good. Do you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yes, my name is Omar, go by Tony Savory. I'm a resident of Owens Mills, Maryland. I'm a father of two. And I also work for the Department of Defense, specializing, specializing in cybersecurity. I'm also a proud member of Capital Alpha Cyber turning Incorporated, Towson Catonsville Alumni Chapter. It was how I was introduced to the position, or the opportunity, to serve in this position. And when I saw it, I saw it as an opportunity to just serve in my community. I've been here for over 12 years. I wanna be able to give my, my, my service, my, my ideas, and, you know, just extend myself towards helping with the reinvestment into the community through this particular commission. So I really, I really appreciate the opportunity to serve in this capacity, and I would definitely look to hear from the community and also serve the community in the best possible way with the funds that, that were provided through the commission.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for...
Yes, Mr. Savory, thank you so much for stepping up, for your willingness to serve. I think it's a very important commission, and I know we have a lot of mutual friends, so I'm looking forward to your service, and I've heard nothing but great things about you, so looking forward to you doing a great job. So thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, thank you, Mr. Savory, for stepping up. I, I think, I've been kinda harping on, not, not that we've been yet able to distribute any of the money that we've collected so far, but I really think this is a chance for Baltimore County to do some game-changing things, especially with youth and youth engagement. And I'm hoping that we can, as the commission starts to meet, that we have a very balanced array of, of things that we're gonna support out of this, out of this fund and out of the commission. So hopefully, you're gonna be a big part of that and help us guide what, you know, what we can do to, you know, kinda change the course in Baltimore County with some of the money that comes in from these taxes from cannabis.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. I think, like you said, it's an exciting opportunity, 'cause we can reimagine what we can do with these funds, and again, it is about reinvestment. So it takes things that might have been historically disadvantaged and give them opportunity to move forward and progress, so that's an exciting opportunity.
Yep, it's exciting, exciting to see what we do with this.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming in today. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Look forward to your appointment.
Thank you.
Any... Looks like we're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another appointment to the Baltimore County Adult Public Guardianship Review Board, Marcia Young. Is Ms. Young with us today?
Yes, she is here, I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Young. Good to have you. Did you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
Oh, okay, I'd be happy to tell you about myself. I am a senior citizen, returning 71, next month, actually. And I have been serving the guardianship board now for several years. I welcome the opportunity to continue in my position as chairperson of the board. I have an extensive background in working with persons with what we call vulnerable populations, that is aging, complex medical, IDDD, behavioral health, and that I do find the need that the review board is, it's so much needed to review cases of persons who do fit in the category as, as needed, as need, I'm sorry. So I do welcome this opportunity. We review on a monthly basis, our board does review, at least, sometimes it's up to 60 to 76 cases a month. So these numbers do tell you that what, you know, the need that there is in providing this particular board to meet the needs of persons who are supported. So I do welcome this opportunity, and I am up to continue to serve. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely, thanks, Ms. Young. And I had you on as an appointment, I didn't realize you were a reappointment, so that's, and we appreciate you staying on and, and wanting to continue to serve for Baltimore County.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Any questions for Ms. Young? Or, okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Young. All right, and next up, we have another appointment to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board, Ms. Michelle Davy. Is Ms. Michelle Davy with us, online or in person? In person? Is... I don't know if she's here. Ms. Davy? No Ms. Davy here, she may, maybe she'll come in later. Okay, all right, well, if, if I see someone who walks in, it's not Ms. Davy. We also have to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board, Dolores Ryland is, and Ms. Ryland, I believe, is online. Ms. Ryland, welcome.
Hi, yeah.
How are you?
I'm, I'm also a reappointment as well.
You're a reappointment as well?
Yes.
Everybody's coming up at once.
Exactly, exactly.
Did you wanna say anything about your service and...
I can just tell you a little bit about myself, what led me to this, I'm a public nurse, supervisor for adult evaluation and review services. I've been there for about nine years, so we had this opportunity several years ago. And we serve basically the underserved seniors, persons with disabilities, that vulnerable population, I'm pretty familiar with. So I'm honored to be back, and I am serving as vice chair.
Okay, great. Any questions for Ms. Ryland? Okay.
I was just wondering, Mr. Chairman, is, Ms. Ryland, do you know if Ms. Davy is also a reappointment?
She is a reappointment, yep, yep, she works for the Department of Social Services.
Okay, so we have lots of reappointments.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ryland, we appreciate you being here with us, and we appreciate your willingness to stay on and serve. We have a reappointment to the Ethics Commission, Ms. Mandy Heinel, who, she's not here today, right? Is that correct, Mr. Sec... Okay. And I feel like we just appointed her four months ago or something, it was in the fall. Not sure what...
This might either be a, a reappointment, as, she may have been filling out a term, and this may be her, her next term. She was also, I think, she was also, I think, appointed chair last time, and this may be a reappointment for chair.
Of the chair, right. And we're all fairly familiar with Ms. Heinel, so. We have, we also have a reappointment to the Design Review Panel, Mr. Joseph Yusefarro, I, hopefully I didn't butcher that. Mr. Yusefarro, are you with us today, or online, or in person? No? Okay. If anyone has questions about Mr. Yusefarro, I guess, let us know. And then we also have another reappointment to the DRP, the Design Review Panel, James Stevens. Is Mr. Stevens with us? Oh, Mr. Stevens, welcome. Do you wanna come up and say a few words, or? We appreciate you being here in person. Thank you, sir.
Oh, sure. I'm James Stevens. I am the entrepreneur and, and principal of SAC Architects. I have 40 years, plus years, in, of architectural experience. The last bit of employment was with STV Incorporated, where I managed the architectural group there. So, and that's where I started the appointment on the Design Review Panel. It's been a pleasure. My experience has been through residential, commercial, industrial architecture, so it really spans the gamut. And it's been an, an extreme pleasure to, to actually serve on the DRP. So, and I'm happy to be here.
Great, and we appreciate you staying on and continuing to serve the county. What part of the county are you from?
Oh, the great district of two.
Bravo.
Yes.
Everybody feels like they have to claim their appoint, you know, their, their people from their district.
I completely understand.
Well, we, again, thank you. Any questions for... Sorry, Councilman Patoka.
Thank you so much, and you worked at STV?
Yes.
And STV is an engineering firm, is it not, or do they do...
Oh, no, it's engineers and architects.
Okay. Is it, it's both, though, engineering and architect?
Oh, absolutely.
I got you. 'Cause my wife, she's an architect, she works for an engineering firm, and sometimes, well, better not say this publicly, I'll just leave it at that. Sometimes architects and engineers, they think differently.
Oh, well, that's, that's the pleasure of the, of making it happen, because you need both to, to really execute a, a building properly.
Okay, well, that was, that was beautifully said.
Well, it's, it's the truth.
Yeah. I will share that at my dinner table talk tonight.
Absolutely.
Thanks so much for, for being part of the, being part of the Design Review Panel, and appreciate it.
It's my pleasure.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here today.
Sure.
Okay, next up, we have Resolution 2725, Authorization for the Expenditure of Non-Local Funds, Baltimore County Public Schools. And I think we have someone from BCPS, Whit Tantliff, and George Saris, to tell us about the resolution. Welcome, gentlemen. You guys always come as a team.
Twice the brain power. Good afternoon, Council Chair Otell and the rest of the county council. A supplemental appropriation of 35.04 million is required to realign budget to actual expenditures in FY 2025. Of the 35.04 million requested, 10.54 million is for year two of the Oracle ERP implementation, with the remainder of funds to provide flexibility for the BAT, which we'll be talking about later, support shortfalls in special ed and repairs and maintenance, and maintain the targeted fund balance at year end. We'll now take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Tantliff or Mr. Saris? Am I butchering your name?
Whit Tantliff.
I got it, okay, good. It's hard, I guess it's not too easy to butcher it. I think we have speaker, a speaker on this? Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Jones, I didn't...
Yes, first of all, thank you so much for, for coming in today, appreciate it very much. I guess I had a question for you. Is this a, a normal BAT? When I say normal, I mean, is it consistent with what we've been doing in the past?
Well, this is supplemental, not the BAT.
Oh, supplemental. Coming from...
You requested us to come up for the supplemental for this one, am I correct, or was it, did I misunderstand, it was the BAT? We have both today.
We have a BAT also. Okay.
This was a supplemental.
Okay, all right.
So we're requesting funds from fund balance. We do it periodically, last year, we came here and also did it for the ERP project. For this year, there were some other shortfalls that we needed to also cover for the, with this supplemental.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Patoka?
I just wanna be clear which item we're on.
We're on, we're actually on the page 76.
Okay.
Resolution 2725. There's also a BAT.
Right, that's where I was confused.
Listed on page 66, and we, we haven't covered the BAT yet.
No, we have not.
Right, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, in order for the school system to spend the money that they are requesting, they need council approval to spend these non-local funds, which in this case is money out of their fund balance.
Okay. So we, we do have a speaker on this matter, so we'll... Do you wanna, do you wanna cover the BAT, and then we'll do the speaker?
Sure.
Afterwards, that way, we're not moving you to have the...
Sure.
So now we're to page 66, on the BAT.
Good afternoon. BCPS is requesting approval of a general fund budget appropriation transfer, or BAT, totaling 17.3 million. The BCPS budget consists of 13 separate appropriation by activities prescribed by the Maryland Department of Education, MSDE. Transfer of funds between activities require approval from the Board of Ed and the county council. We've already gone through the Board of Ed for this, as well as the supplemental. This annual budget appropriation transfer will realign funds by category with planned and projected year-end expenses. Funds are available due to salary savings and salary expenditures from higher-than-expected turnover, reorganization, and use of grant funding. The proposed transfers are necessary to implement the FY 2025 operating plan, implement the teacher substitute contract, provide for blueprint private pre-K program, provide for student transportation, utilities and maintenance of plan. Because BCPS carries no contingency budget, the only way to manage unanticipated expenses during the year is via budget, is via amendments to the budget. Thank you.
Councilman Jones, did you...
No.
Councilman Patoka?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so I understand it, these items, 3502, 3503, 3504, 3507, 3508, 3501, 3505, 3509, 3510, and 3511, these are the objects to where they were funded? And where are they going to, again? So when I say the objects, just so everybody can understand what I'm saying, that's mid-level administration, instructional salaries, instructional textbooks, student personnel services, health services, administration, other instructional costs, student transportation, operation and plant, of plant and equipment, and ma, maintenance of plant and equipment. So where, they're going from those items, those objects, to where? Councilman Patoka, if I may, Mr. Chair. So 3502 through 3508, on page 66, that's appropriations, then you can see the next column.
Oh, this is on QVs, I see, I see.
That's the transfer amount, and then on the next page, 3501 to 3511 are where the monies are being transferred to.
Okay, gotcha. So I guess I'm gonna zero in, thank you, Councilman Crandall, appreciate that. I misread the chart, but the thing that I'm zeroing in on is...
Mr. Tantliff will, will compensate me later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just kidding.
You'll get an appearance on the FM radio.
Okay. Instructional salary and wages, so we've been over, we've been discussing comp, teacher compensation, and not just teachers, but educational support staff, principals, other unions, and so I'm just gonna ask the question, we have $7 million, $7 million and $50,000, and it's moving from there over to these other categories, like plant and equipment, maintenance of plant and equipment? Just kinda, what's the thinking on that, why we would move instructional money into plant, into plant maintenance?
Sure, we're not actually removing it, we just have flexibility in Activity 3, which is instructional salaries, just due to underspending, that's our largest category, it's the teacher salary, paraeducators, and so we have a, just a small vacancy rate creates some available dollars in that category, and we have the other categories it's going to where we needed to overspend due to vacancies in facilities, maintenance, et cetera.
Okay, so that, that's kinda the, the essence of my question is, we, we had a three-year agreement with the five unions, we, Councilman Cash and I tried to fence off some, some appropriation to address the contract, and 7 million of savings in that particular object is going to plant maintenance, and I feel like it's kind of the opposite of what we are trying to address in the budget deliberations the week after the budget was passed.
Well, this is the 25 budget, of course, last year, last week was the 26 budget, but the sum of all, we, we don't ever purposely keep a teaching position vacant, we, we do that with some central office positions with the hiring freeze, but no school-based positions. So as best as we can, there are always some vacancies, but the aggregate of the budget, it's not that we're saying, let's underspend in instructional and spend more in other areas, we're spending what we have to to keep the school system running. If we have a ton of vacancies on the maintenance or facility side, we'll need to use contractors to get the lawn mowed, to get things repaired. So in aggregate, is what we're looking at to fund all of the salaries. It's not that we could just pull some dollars out of Activity 3 and spend it to Activity 3. At year end, the sum of all, of our spending goes into fund balance, and then we start fresh for next year, and that's what we're trying to solve at the moment, is to find enough funds to cover more of the negotiated contract than was in the budget adopted by the council.
Is this money, is the funding, so the funding, we had savings in vacant positions in instructional salary wages, and we have, has funding already be, already been used to pay for the operation of plant equipment and the maintenance of plant and equipment? Has that already been expended, and we're trying to cover those expenses?
Some, to some extent, that's true, but it's based on our year-end projections. We need that money to cover our year-end spending, which of course, most of the year is, is completed by now, so most of that, yes, has been expended.
We're talking about a little over a month, June, basically, and the remainder of May. Do you anticipate that there'll be funds remaining at year end for operation and plant maintenance and maintenance of plant and equipment? Or is it gonna take it down? Or is it going to take it down to zero in your estimation?
We try to, in our forecast, keep about $1 million cushion at a minimum in each activity just to account for unknown contingencies. At year end, the sum of all of our underspending will drop into fund balance, regardless of what activity it occurs in. So the BAT is just moving money between categories. It's an administrative exercise to make sure that we do not overspend in any activity.
Gotcha. Is it possible to roll over FY, I understand that this is FY '25 funds, and we're moving into fiscal year '26. Is it possible to roll over fiscal year '25 funds into '26? So like, could, is it possible for the instructional salary and wages to be rolled over to fiscal '26?
It can't. If it was a grant, there would be a possibility of that. But in the general fund, everything closes out at year end, and it drops into fund balance. So whatever we are in aggregate between total revenue and total expense, the sum of that drops into fund balance as a single number and can be re-appropriated. Currently, in the budget that was adopted last week, we have $30 million of fund balance accounted for in the budget. And as you know, the superintendent is working hard with her team right now to find additional dollars. And that may include some more fund balance as part of that solution.
Thank you. So just so I understand it, whatever funds are left over goes from fiscal '25, goes into this thing called fund balance. And then in fiscal '26, it gets up to $30 million because that's the authorized amount, will go to somewhere into the BCPS budget to address needs that we have in fiscal '26?
It's, it becomes a source, it's a source of revenue, just like local revenue and state revenue. So we want to pick a sustainable amount. We were using higher amounts the last few years because our fund balance really grew during COVID. We had the remote year, then the year people, when we came back, contracts weren't spent as much. So we were using more fund balance than our sustainable rate pre-COVID or going forward, beginning next year. $30 million is about what our sustainable rate is so that we don't take our fund balance down to, you know, below a safe level.
Sure. And from what we heard from the superintendent, it is her anticipation that some of the fund balance will use to address the gaps in the agreement in terms of our ability to fund salaries to the five, to employees of the five unions?
As part of the solution to cover the gap between what was adopted and what's needed to do something more than we already have funding for in the adopted budget, some additional fund balance will be part of that solution.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman.
Catch.
Catch, I'm sorry. Everybody's flashing at once.
Everyone's flashing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Potoka, actually, the amount is $10 million. If you take a look on page 67, the bottom two, you'll see that due to vacancies, it's $10.2 million.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Cash.
I do have a question. Last Thursday, or this Thursday before, when we had discussions about utilizing the turnover from vacancies, our fiscal note from our audit department said that they were estimating a $20 million surplus in that fund. And to take that further, the head of the audit department said that that was based on statistics that weren't up to date. And she projected that it could be as high as $40 million. So 20 to 40 million. Does that sound right to you?
No, that's not at all correct. Right now, our total projection for the year requires a supplemental appropriation, which we just talked about, to ensure that we have a positive balance at year end. So the sum of any salary savings combined with overages in other areas, when we add all that up, ERP project, the other things we've discussed, we require a supplemental. And then we're also requesting a budget appropriation transfer to then put all the money in the correct categories. So as I mentioned, we did have higher positive salary variance the last few years that were driven by COVID or overall positive balance. In this year's budget, '25, $25 million was removed from salary. It was just taken out, followed by $10.5 million the prior year. So those all came out of salary savings and salary turnover. So the numbers quoted are not accurate for where we are this year, based on this year's projections. And again, even if we have positive salary variance, the most important thing to be aware of is the total variance for the budget when you add everything up. So if you have a plus somewhere and a minus somewhere else, you can't just take the plus and ignore the minus.
Are you, are you talking about the entire county government?
No, just, just BCPS.
Education.
Yes, Mr. Cash, just, just BCPS.
Okay, so the $20 million you think is too high?
No, it's not that we won't have $20 million of positive salary variance. But in aggregate, without the supplemental that we're requesting you to vote on next week, we would not have a positive variance at all. So even if salaries were positive, there's offsets in other places. The ERP projects, these maintenance contracts we've talked about, that when we add it all up, we don't have a net extra availability. But whatever falls into fund balance, that's a source for the budget next year, $30 million. And we're looking to spend a little more of that and not get into an area where we're in an unsustainable situation to try to solve some of the gap for next year. So the focus on one part of the budget that's under, but that's ignoring the parts of the budget that are over.
Now, the parts of the budget that are over, or overspent, I guess is what you're saying, does, can that money come from other sources in the education budget where there is a surplus?
Well, that is essentially what we're doing between the supplement and the BAT. We look at first, where do we have extra money due to underspending? Instructional salaries, as we just discussed, is almost always where we have the largest source because it's such a big bucket of money. So even a small excess turnover rate will create variance there. So we're looking at everything combined to put the BAT together. All our overages combined against all our underspends.
Do you, do you know what the total is in overages?
Well, essentially, it's the supplemental. The supplemental covers our overages, the $35 million that we just talked about earlier.
So that, okay, so is there $35 million?
Do you mean in, by activity? If you look at the frums and twos in the BAT, you can see where we're taking money from, which are all the decreased categories. And you can see where we're putting it to. So those amounts are needed to balance each activity.
Well, that's, that's $17 million.
That's right. That's what the BAT is. That's what we're requesting.
Not $30 million.
$35 is the supplemental that we talked about first.
Okay. And so the supplemental and the BAT added together equals the amount of overspending everywhere else in the budget?
Well, the BAT is overall neutral.
Oh, I, I know that.
So that, that's neutral. The $35 is needed to make sure that the budget stays positive. Now, that also gives us the cushion we talked about to make sure we, because we can't even go over by a dollar in any activity at year end. So that gives us some extra money, but that'll just fall into fund balance at year end. So we're requesting, the $35 million is more than we think we need at year end. But that's okay because it'll just, anything we underspend will drop back into fund balance and can be reused.
The point I'm, what I'm asking is, the fund balance in salaries, that's one number. Do we need to use any of that to plug the gap in other areas in the budget? Or is there enough savings in other categories that we wouldn't need to touch the salary?
No, we really require, the only, not require, but the only way we can make the BAT balance is in the way we've proposed it. I mean, there's maybe slight changes we could make. But once the year closes, it doesn't matter where the money came from because it all becomes one number that drops into fund balance. So if we take six instead of seven and we find a million somewhere else, it won't change how we spend money, balance of year. And it won't change what drops into fund balance at year end. It's just what our balance is in each activity at year end to make sure they all are positive.
So the, the plan is to have a $35 million surplus at the end of the year, right?
No.
No. What, what is it?
Our, we require the $35 million to cover our projected deficit for the year, plus leave us a cushion.
Right.
So we're expecting roughly $13 or $14 million of that will drop back into fund balance at year end of the 30, 35, I mean.
Would you repeat that again?
Let me check a number. Of the $35 million, let's just say roughly half of that, we feel will drop back into fund balance at year end. So we needed to make sure we don't go over in any individual category.
So it's almost 17.5, right?
Yes, it's, it's more in that area.
And what's the 13?
Which 13 was that?
You said 13 million.
I'm not, I misspoke if I said that. I'm not sure what that, that was. I apologize.
So are you saying then, at the end of the year, that the surplus or money left over will be approximately 17.5 million?
Well, our projected, once we close the year, we had fund balance going into the year. We're expecting to close the year. And this was in the auditor's report. We were projecting to have a fund balance at year end, including what drops out from this year's spending of 60 to 65 million. That's what we expect our year-end position to be. When all said and done with our starting balance, what we spent, the supplement, and what we expect to underspend, we expect to have 60 to 65 million at year end. $30 million of that's already accounted for in the adopted budget. We expect to take at least several million more of that to help solve the problem and compensate, and cover more of the union year-two agreements.
So the 30 million I had was actually right?
I'm not sure.
Well, never mind.
I apologize, I'm not.
You said 60 million and never mind.
I, I know, there's a lot of numbers flying back and forth.
I said, so you expect a surplus of 30 million? And that's what you came up with, actually? When you were going through those numbers?
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Believe me, it was 30 million.
Okay. Councilman Cash, are you?
Yeah, I'm finished. Thank, thank you.
Councilman Marks and then Councilman Jones.
I have a question related to this, but then also the BAT. So we're going to jump back to the BAT, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. I guess my question is, we passed the, we, the budget a week ago. When are we going to learn about the final offer the superintendent's going to make to the educators?
I believe that she'll be able to finalize everything this week.
Okay. My other question's about the BAT, so I'll hold off.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Whit. I guess I have a quick question. I guess I want to cut right to the chase. Can you please explain why we can, or cannot, or should, or should not just take all the fund transfer and move it to salaries?
Fund balance?
Yes, all of, all the fund balance and move it to salaries.
Sure. If, if we drained fund balance and put it all into year-two compensation, that would leave a year-end fund balance of approximately zero. So that would mean going into FY '27, we would have zero fund balance as a source of revenue. So this year, as is, we have 30 plus whatever else we're, we decide to use to support the union contracts. So that would be a gap that would need to be made up just to start the year. So let's just say it was $4 million. That means we're starting the year at negative $34 million because fund balance is a primary source for our budget. Every year, we have to underspend our budget. We're good stewards of our finances, and there's no way we can come into the dollar. We have to underspend our budget. And it's really 30 or 40 million on a $2 billion budget is, is a pretty small variance in the big scheme of things. But we would need to cover that $34 million just to begin with. So this year, we got $29 million from the county more than last year. Well, we would be, that wouldn't even cover fund balance, much less any of the year-three contracts that we had to cover. So we need to leave it at a sustainable number. So that would be a one-time source that would leave us in a severe deficit for FY '27. We wouldn't have whatever, well, actually, it's worse than, if we use the, let's just say, the 30 million, say we took 30 more. So we had 60 million. Well, we'd have very, a very small percentage of that available the next year. Maybe 10 or 20 would be available. So it would actually be, I wasn't thinking about the extra appropriation. So we'd have to cover all of that. And we'd have to use our state and local just to start with a flat budget to the prior year. You know, just like if you think of the county funding, we're always looking at, here's this year's base, how much more are we getting? This year's base for the state, how much more are we getting? Well, fund balance started here. It's no different than local or state when you look at our total general fund. So we'd have to use our state and local revenue just to get to our starting point, much less pay for year-three of the contract, pay for medical inflation, pay for contract inflation, et cetera. So it would cause a giant gap in the budget.
And what would that mean?
Well, that would mean whatever our total needs were, we would be, say, 50 or 60 million. We'd be starting in the hole just to get to break even. So we wouldn't, for sure, we wouldn't be able to cover any employee compensation that year.
Yeah. For every $10 million, that's 100 teachers. So if we spend all of our fund balance this year or next, sooner or later, the only way to sustain the level of services that we are providing is to reduce hundreds more positions for, for sustainability. And I just don't see that the public wants to increase class sizes. And they certainly don't want to increase taxes, so.
And we certainly don't want to lay any teachers off.
That's my feeling. So I'm just concerned, I know that last week, the council spoke admirably about its, its own fund balance and the importance of that fund balance to sustaining the bond ratings and to. and to providing some flexibility during periods of economic weakness. Well, it's simply as important to the Department of Education, which is our little operation, as it is to the greater county government at large. Our fund balance on July 1 is projected to be about 3% of our operating budget. And I think that your own staff would tell you that that is a reasonable target because that fund balance is public money. It's taxpayer money. We can't use it. Only the council can authorize the use of those dollars. And we just, as Mr. Tantliff said, we want to be responsible stewards of those taxpayer dollars to sustain them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Marks?
I think, since I think we are jumping around. Look, I'm a special educator in another county. I certainly have no problem with a lot of this, certainly special education services. But I got to tell you as a teacher, providing $8 million to Oracle to update its payroll system and things like that, that's the sort of red flag that goes up and just irritates the heck out of educators. I mean, why is that sort of funding needed right now? How old is the current system we're dealing with?
Well, we are currently in year two of our Oracle implementation. We're going live with our new payroll and HR system at the end of June. And we've started kicking off our financial, so our accounting system. So we're in the middle of it. CGI, our prior system was, did not work that good. It was outdated. So we've had to pay a significant amount of money just to update CGI. But as users, we were not happy with their service. So we're going to Oracle, which is industry best standard. Several other large LEAs in Maryland use Oracle, including Montgomery. And we're in the middle of what will hopefully be a completely successful implementation. But there's no way to backtrack on that now. And we did require to go to a new ERP system, just like the county did several years ago.
It's just one of the, it's just that type of expenditure is what gnaws at educators when they see that, those type of expenses in the central office. It just, it's very difficult to sell those type of things. I understand your explanation, but I think you're going to hear from Ms. Sexton, who's here, and others that that's the type of red flag that goes up. Thank you.
Quick question.
Councilman Catch.
Thank you. Just to review this, we have a $60 million surplus, of which 34 million is spoken for into next year's budget, right? So we have 26 million left over. What, how much of that 26 million would you and the school system feel comfortable using toward honoring the contract?
As I mentioned before, 30 is in the budget.
Right.
The superintendent is kind of pushing it to where the furthest we can go, which will be several million more from fund balance. It just won't be sustainable if we pull any more out of it than what we're talking about now. We really are looking at every penny we can find, every rock, every penny we could comfortably get out of fund balance and not put us in a poor position for FY '27.
So you're talking about several million toward the contract?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sers. I think, is that Councilman Grandle?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen, going back to this eight million that Councilman Marks referenced. So you said that we're in year two of implementation of the Oracle system?
Correct.
Right. So was it not, only in year two, we're in a long-term contract with Oracle, was it not anticipated that they would ask for another eight million for an update just two years into something that's not even implemented yet? A little confused on that.
Sure. There's a three-year implementation cycle. Last year, we came and asked for a supplemental to pay for year one. We had went into the year knowing that we would need a supplemental for ERP year two. So right, wrong, or indifferent, that's how all parties planned it going into this year. Year three, which is our final implementation year, MSD did approve that as a one-time expenditure, which was in the adopted budget that you voted on last year. So we won't need a supplemental for year three. And then after that, it will just be the ongoing software cost, which is similar, maybe a little more than what we've always spent, which is a couple million dollars a year.
Okay. Is Mr. Martin here? Chris, is this normal? In your estimation, I know that you're not the OIT guy for BCPS, but is this like a normal thing in software purchases like this?
So I don't know how the schools do it, but I, what our department does is we build out new implementation in capital budget and that powers the installation, implementation, all that part of it. And then we roll it over and operate it. That being said, there's like some costs involved now. They've already started. There's certain money already spent that has already been paid.
Right.
It's a little bit different in the town, like it's not.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to, I guess I, I mean, I understand this. It's really just a matter of how BCPS has chosen to fund this one particular item. Knowing that BCPS comes before the council this time every year for a BAT and sometimes a supplemental as well. And this is not an abnormal thing. So you did, in essence, foresee this cost, but chose to fund it knowing that you'd be coming to the council in June for a BAT?
That's correct.
Okay. I understand.
There was discussion with our counterparts in Office of Finance. And one of the reasons for doing it this way is that we keep these costs out of the maintenance of effort calculation, which I think is a consideration for county government. And by comparison, I believe it was three or four years ago when county government left the same legacy software system, which we are now leaving to go with Workday. I recall that that item that came before the council was approximately $25 million in total. So we feel that our total package several years later at perhaps $27 million is about the going cost for a system of this size and complexity.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sers.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Tantliff. Mr. Chair.
Councilman Catch.
Yeah, very quickly. Would it have been smarter to join with OIT to come up with a system to, for?
We did that, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We did consult with the county government because we were both on the same legacy system. And we had a collaborative committee to do some, an RFP. And at some point, county government decided to go a different direction. And so they went with Workday and they provided some funding for the school system to keep its system going for a short period of time until we could do our own selection of a parallel system.
Two separate systems, are we spending more money?
That's hard to say. I don't know if we could have achieved a discount by remaining on the same platform, but that's not how it evolved. And I don't think the parties that were here at the time are here to address that decision.
That's a shame because I think we could have saved money.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a speaker. Appreciate you coming in. Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Someone already said Cindy Sexton is here to speak.
Ms. Sexton? How are you? Good to see you.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As you know, I'm here on behalf of the over 9,000 certified educators in Baltimore County. And as you know, we're still trying to get our agreed-to compensation funded. And I'm here to talk about the BAT. This year, that $7 million from instructional salaries is almost enough for each member of the tag co-bargaining unit to get a 1% COLA. But I'd like to raise other numbers as well. In the six years that I have been president, over $111 million has been transferred from instructional salaries to other categories in the annual BAT. Largely, that extra money is from unfilled positions and high turnover in the educator ranks. That includes over $43 million last year and over $33 million the year before. It's frustrating that the money that was appropriated for salaries doesn't end up in the hands of those who generally bear the brunt of those unfilled positions. Our educators, yes, but more importantly, our students first and foremost. They need and deserve educators in their classroom. Educators who can focus on the instruction and all the other needs of our students, physical, emotional, mental health, academic, the list goes on and on. And when there are vacancies or positions eliminated, the educators who remain are the ones who have to pick up the slack and fill the roles of those missing educators. You've heard me say, no one goes into education for the money. We go into it because we want to make a difference in the lives of our students and indeed the future of our society. But educators are frustrated and angry that this three-year deal has turned into the situation it has. Because I'm not on the county council and I don't know the ins and outs of the budget appropriation transfers, what you can and can't do, whether the money has technically already been spent, all those things. But I need to point out that going back for just the six years that I've been president, $111 million, which should have gone to our educators and of course, by extension, our students, did not end up there. We are certainly not in a business-as-usual environment in our politics and in our society. National educator shortages abound and teaching is hard work. We see the turnover data for our system and the nation. Our educators deserve what was promised to them. And if nothing can be done about the BAT transfer this year, I needed to be sure that you were aware of the amounts moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sexton. Any questions for Ms. Sexton? Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move to Resolution 2525. It's a PUD for the Bosley. And this is in my district. This actually, this PUD was, we had a former PUD that expired and Edenwald bought, it's the former Presbyterian home in Towson here in Southland Hills. And Edenwald has come in and has put together a, just a fantastic project that the neighbors are very excited about. It's going to, it's going to keep the kind of, the genre of the neighborhood by keeping, there's a beautiful lawn there that is going to stay pretty much intact. We're going to have a brand-new facility there that will serve a new group of people that are aging and want to stay in the Towson and central Baltimore County community. So we're excited about it. I think we have Mr. Tim Cetrco here. Did you, Tim, did you want to come up and just say a few words about it? And then I know we have speakers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Tim Cetrco. I'm an attorney here in Towson and I represent, actually, the German, General German Age People's Home of Baltimore. They are the parent company of Edenwald. You might be familiar with Edenwald. General German has been around for 150 years, taking care of elderly people in the Baltimore area. We're lucky to have them in Towson. Mr. Mark Beggs is here with us tonight. He's the president and CEO of Edenwald. He's been wearing a different hat these days. Instead of taking care of elderly people in Towson and Baltimore County, he's developing properties. And you might be familiar with the joint project that Edenwald's doing with Goucher College, a very exciting project where three new residential towers are being built on the campus of Goucher College in connection with Edenwald. And Mark's overseeing that, doing a great job. He's a local guy, his office is right down the street here in Towson. He's been meeting with their Southland Hills neighbors on this particular PUD project on 400 Georgia Court. But he's getting involved in the community and they're investing their money in Towson. This project, as you know, you mentioned, has had two failed previous attempts at being developed. And the community didn't like them. The second project, I think, was somewhat acceptable. It was a PUD resolution that was approved. It was in Councilman Marks' district at the time. And Councilman Marks moved the resolution forward. I think it was 2822. It was three years ago. The council approved it and went all the way through the process. And at the very last minute, the developer of the project pulled out and left the Presbyterian home sitting there. It's vacant. It's an eyesore. It needs to come down. Something new needs to go in its place. I think we have an excellent project, as you mentioned. We're in the infancy, well, Mr. Beggs has been meeting with the community association for some time now, but we're still working with them and listening to their concerns, addressing their concerns that they have. So it's a great project. I know we had our engineer, Kristi Bischoff, is here. She's with Daphne Kuhn and Walker here in Towson. She was also the engineer on the previous project. So she brings a wealth of knowledge about the project to us, having already been through it one time before. Our resolution that we have pending today is very similar to the resolution that Councilman Marks introduced and was passed by the council. So we kept it that way intentionally. So we tried to be as consistent as we could with the previous projects. So we're asking for your support and the council's support tonight on passing our resolution, allowing us to move forward with the development of the property. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have. I think Kristi, if she did sign up, is going to yield her time in case we just need to answer any questions that you might have. And I know Mark, Mr. Beggs, signed up to speak as well. But if he feels we have it covered at this point, he could yield his time and we could get to some of the neighbors who might be here that would like to speak.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Cetrco. Any questions?
Thank you. Do they still own the Gryzenheim?
Still own the what?
The Gryzenheim.
The Gryzenheim. Mark, what do you say about that?
Right. Is it, the building's still there though, right? Okay. Okay. And is the Presbyterian home, is there a historic building that's part of the complex today?
There was the old, it's named the Bosley PUD after Mr. Bosley. And it was the Bosley Home or the Bosley Mansion at one time. And I wasn't involved in the project at the time that it was listed or nominated to be designated as a historic property, but it did not pass to be designated as a historic building on the property. If I have that correct, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. And there were, a lot of, a lot of the building that is currently there has been changed or modified over the years, added to. And the building's in pretty bad shape.
It's going to be pulled.
It was hard. It was hard, it was hard really to figure out what, what was historic and what wasn't, even though it's all old. But the, the building that's being built really, I feel like while it's a different design, it really kind of honors, and actually, I think is going to really be a real enhanced, not an enhancement to the neighborhood, but fits the neighborhood well.
It's going to be pulled down, then?
Yes. And you'll, and I think we have some neighbors that are going to talk about, you know, because one of the things about both these PUDs was the neighbors, from the very beginning, the Southland Hills neighborhood, and to some extent, West Towson, really had a seat at the table. And what really wanted, what we really wanted to see was to keep a lot of the lawn that's there, and there's some other features to the property that are very important to the neighborhood to keep intact. And while it would have been nice to be able to do something with the old building, it's really not in that greatest shape. I was told that it might have been an impediment to the previous developer. I'm not sure of that 100%. Yeah, I think one of the, one of the issues that the previous developer had was the way it's placed on the property to, to, they were, they were going to try to preserve part of the building, and it, it makes the project tougher because of where it's situated. At least that was my understanding.
I'm sorry, we'll be happy to answer any other questions that you all might have in light of whatever our neighbors might say. We're just starting the process, as you know. This will allow us to move forward. So we have a lot of work to do with our neighbors yet, and listen to their concerns and try to address them as we can.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Cotroko?
Thank you.
Did we, so we had speakers. I don't know if, if you guys, we can go right to, so Ms. Bel Castro, we had, Mark Beggs is going to cede his time, and Kristi Bischoff is, is that, you're, you're good, not, okay. So if you just want to go to?
Kate Knott.
Kate Knott, and is that all?
Yes.
Oh, well, that's easy. Ms. Knott? How are you? Straight from the hospital.
So my name is Kate Knott. I am a current board member of Southland Hills Neighborhood Association and the immediate past president. I've lived in Southland Hills for 20 years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this PUD. It literally sits in the middle of our neighborhood. It has been a concern of ours since Presbyterian Home announced its closure in 2016. Over the years, I have been involved with literally every proposal brought forward on the site, and I can say with confidence that Edenwald has been one of the most transparent and community-minded groups that we have worked with. At the community input meeting, Edenwald went beyond what was required, sharing preliminary thoughts on the building design and materials and the layout of the open space. They welcomed feedback and demonstrated a genuine desire to be good neighbors. Their vision also reflects the best parts of our neighborhood's past. The design preserves the open space in the front of the property and encourages interaction between residents and the surrounding community. For those of us who remember the heyday of the Presbyterian Home, hopefully, this project will be a welcome return to that time when community meetings were held in the building, kids trick-or-treated through the halls, we had breakfast with Santa and Easter egg hunts, which brought generations together on that lawn. Right now, the property is an eyesore, as mentioned, and a safety issue. It's deteriorating and unused, something we all agree is a problem. The Edenwald project is an opportunity to restore vitality and purpose to that space. Importantly, the use they're proposing is consistent with how the property has been used in the past. However, with fewer assisted living beds, it should have less impact on the neighborhood in terms of staffing. In short, Edenwald is really offering more than a development project. They're offering a thoughtful, respectful partnership with our community, and I hope you will support the proposal and let it move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Knott. Any questions for Ms. Knott? Anybody want to add anything? We, all right. Thank you, Chair. Is this the only speaker we have on? Is this the only speaker we have?
I just wanted to make a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
This is how, this is how planning and developments are supposed to be done. The, the developers already engaged the community before it even came, I think, to Councilman Ortell. They maybe have been involved in those discussions, I'm not sure. But the council sometimes takes some heat before, because of the whole PUD process. But this is exactly how they're supposed to work. So I commend Mr. Beggs, Mr. Cotroko, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Knott, Ms. Bischoff, for all of your efforts so far. This is exactly how a PUD is supposed to happen. You should be commended for your efforts. Thank you.
And it really is, like I said, this, anytime you have a site like this, the, the site was zoned for, I think, 28 townhomes. It could have easily, a builder could have easily bought it, probably sold the townhomes before they were even built, and we would have had a wall of houses there instead of a lawn. And like I said, what's really, what's going to be built there is really going to be complimentary to the whole community, not just the neighborhood, but gives us more residences for our aging population, which we desperately need in the county. And so we're, it's a win-win. So thank, thank you, everyone, and we'll move on. Thanks again. All right. So next up, we have Ms. Lauren Buckler from DW, DPWNT.
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, guys.
Yes. I'm sorry. As Ms. Buckler makes her way up, I just wanted to, as we're getting into fiscal matters, I just wanted to publicly thank Director Reed, Director Gutwold, Matt Carpenter, our grants administrator, for some quick work on, on a local issue. You all really, really came through for the 7th District. And I know that I can get impatient at times, and you all lived with it, and, and made it happen, and really, in terms of government, in, in quick fashion. So I just wanted to thank those individuals and the others that were, were involved in it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much. And kind of echoing what Councilman Crandall said, I, I want to thank the administration. We've been dealing with the infestation of midges, which have now moved from the 7th District to the 5th District.
You're wel, you're welcome.
Thank you. And the county executive's office was extremely engaged on this over the Memorial Day holiday, and they're working with me and the state legislators to try to come up with some options. So I wanted to thank all of those involved with that.
We heard a lot about midges this weekend, all over the, all over the county, but they're all on the east side. Ms. Buckler, the floor is yours.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Lauren Buckler. I'm the director for Public Works and Transportation. The Department of Public Works and Transportation is requesting a council approval for the budget appropriation transfer in the amount of $5,050,000. These funds are necessary for utility costs of streetlights and storm emergencies. The cost of BG&E utilities has increased for our streetlights and traffic lights. Additionally, there were significantly more storms this year than we had budgeted for. We are requesting a transfer of more than 10%. $1,050,000 of an appropriation within DPWT, and transferring $4 million from the Office of Information Technology to meet these obligations. Happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions for Ms. Buckler? Who knew? All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, Director Walt Pesterfield from Corrections. Walt, how are you today?
Very good, sir.
Good seeing you, as always.
Yes.
I spent some time in Miami with your deputy Hillary.
Was he behaved?
He, he was a little a bit out of control, but no, he was great. I was, I, I sat next to him on one of the days, and we collaborated on a lot of different things. So it was fun to be with him.
Very good, very good. Good evening. The Department of Corrections is requesting council approval for a budget appropriation transfer in the amount of $950,000. These funds are necessary to cover overtime for correctional staff due to new correctional officer recruitment, pre-service and in-service training, an increased number of hospital details. The department acquisition of prisoner transport responsibilities previously handled by the Sheriff's Department requires some overtime for staff and an increase in motor pool trucks for the prisoner transport van operation. Additionally, these funds are necessary to offset increased personnel costs resulting from more hiring and referral bonuses due to recruitment efforts. Funds from the Office of Budget and Finance will be utilized to assist corrections in meeting these obligations.
Okay. Any questions for Director Pesterfield? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, of course, this afternoon. Next up, we have, it says Arthur Frank, but I see Juliette Fisher, and Michelle Arvin Greer is, are here today for?
Thanks for recognizing me.
That's no Arthur Frank.
You're right. It might be good evening at this point. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the county council. Nice to see all of you. I think in my 11 years on the bench, this is only the second time we've come before you to ask for additional funds. Obviously, the funds here are a little less than the last two organizations. We're asking for $42,000. We have two staff members who had to be reclassified. That was previously approved, but it unfortunately put our budget over for this last year. So we're just asking for a $42,000 BAT to cover those costs. And I would note that it is available from the Office of Human Resources, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Fisher? Good to see you. Thanks for your patience and?
Well, it's our pleasure to be here, and best to you, and we're glad that we don't have to stay for the rest.
Councilman Catch, Councilman Catch has a question.
And which?
We'll get ready for another two hours.
So which, which district do you?
We're both from your district, although I used to be in Councilman Marks' district for a long time.
Thank you, guys. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Joseph Jackson, Assistant County Attorney from the Real Estate Compliance Division. Talk about two contracts of sale, one at 1311 Moore's Lane in Middle River, and another at 6617 Windsor Mill Road in Woodlawn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. Yes, we do have two contracts that we are asking for county approval. The administration is seeking approximately, is actually seeking $13,580 to acquire a drainage and utility easement with a temporary construction area. That total amount of space will be 6,396 square feet on Moore's Lane in Middle River. That is related to the gunpowder pumping station, to the White Marsh Pumping Station, which is designed to give our system in the county more resilience and to make it better able to handle the changing environments that we're in. And that's the first contract. Any questions before I move on to the second one?
Any questions about Councilman?
So we have 19 more to go, correct? 19 more to be acquired.
I will have to get back to you to the exact number off the top of my head.
Yeah, look, it looks like there's 78 acquisitions, and this is the sixth one, so another total of 25 requiring council approval. So, okay.
Thank you.
If you could, I'm just curious, how many more we have to go?
I'll find out for you and, and report back. And then the second contract that the administration is seeking approval for is to acquire land for highway widening on Windsor Mill Road. This is, the, the contract value is $11,686, and we are looking at approximately 0.15 acres in highway widening areas, 0.041 acres in temporary construction and adjustment areas, and 0.001 acreage for drainage and utility easement areas. Any questions regarding those?
Councilman Jones, or?
Yes, I was just going to ask.
And how much for that?
That would be $11,686. Page 39, too.
All right. Thank you very much. I, I, I know it's been a long time coming, this, this project. It's been some time in the works.
It truly has.
And I guess we're still on Phase 1, and do we have any idea how much, how much more property do we need?
I know there's a ballpark number, the complete Phase 1, but don't, I don't want to speak out of, out of school, so to speak, so I will find that out and get you the exact number.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I think that's everybody good. All right. Next up, we have Major Jeffrey Hartman from Baltimore County Police for a contract on security guard services. It's on page 42 in your books, if you. How are you, sir?
Very well, sir. Yourself?
Good. Thanks for coming in today.
Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure. Good evening, Council Chairman and fellow council members. The administration is requesting approval of two contracts to provide security guard services at various county-owned and/or operated facilities. The county resolicited bids for security guard services, armed and unarmed, under a publicly solicited bid. The current agreement expires July 1, 2025. Seven bid responses were received. One bidder was declared non-responsive. Three were declared non-responsible. Two awards will be made in Jay Wallace Company, or Jay Wallace Enterprises LLC and Wachen Security Agency Incorporated. The contractors will provide security services to the following buildings and locations in the Baltimore County Towson Complex, the Historic Courthouse, County Office Building, Jefferson Building, Towson Complex Tunnel, 305 Washington Avenue, Office of Human Resources, Public Safety Boarding, and Department of Aging. Services will be provided during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m., excluding holidays. Services will also be provided upon requests for Towson Complex weekend festivals and meeting or testing dates outside normal business hours. Services under this contract will also be provided to the Circuit Court, family visitation location, Health Department Resource Centers, various health centers, WIC locations, the East Side and West Side shelters, Central and Western Acceptance Facilities, and freezing weather shelters as needed. Do you have any questions, sir?
Any questions for? Just a comment. Thank you, Major. Major, I want to say you look great.
Oh, thank you, sir.
I've never seen you in a suit before. I've only seen you in uniform.
It's a bit of a change. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You look great. I think this is the right, the right look for you.
Thank you. My wife will be happy she picked the clothes out for the day.
Thank you, man. The blue police tie, it's all, it all works.
That's coordinated. Yes, sir.
Thank you for a, a good report.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Crandall, did you have?
I, I just have a question for, for Major Hartman. Did Councilman Patoka finally scare Major Wedeck away from testifying before us?
For the time being, maybe. Maybe not permanently. I'm sure he'll be back.
Okay. Send him, send him Councilman Patoka's regards.
Will do, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could I just request that whenever Major Hartman comes in, that he goes early in the agenda?
I was incognito, sir. I can't expect much more.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Okay. Next up, we have Mr. Lawrence Richardson, Deputy Director for HHS on several items. Mr. Richardson, how are you today?
I'm well. Good evening, Chairman Ortell, members of the council. I have a BAT and four contracts for you this evening. The administration is requesting your approval of general fund budget appropriation transfer of $675,000. The transfer, the funds are available from the Office of Human Resources. This is to offset higher-than-anticipated salary cost. This is to offset higher-than-anticipated salary cost and also increased overtime, medical supplies, and operational supplies with, mostly within the Bureau of Animal Services. I'd be happy to take any questions on the bat.
Any questions for Mr. Richardson on the bat? Guess not, okay. And then, you have a couple different contracts.
Yes. First contract is a, the administration is, we're seeking your approval for a contract with Prolog. This is to provide recovery support services for adults who are in recovery from substance use disorder. The contract will commence July 1 and continue through June 30 of 2026. It has four one-year renewals with an estimated total compensation of $649,765 for the entire five-year term. The Prolog will, will be operating a community resource recovery center for adults aged 18 and older who are voluntarily seeking recovery from substance use disorder. We provide, they will provide peer mentoring, peer-led support groups, informational classes, life skill sessions, and then also access to transportation and linkages to community services for socialization opportunities. We will receive referrals for these services from a variety of sources, including therapists, hospitals, and outpatient treatment centers. The recovery center will operate two days per week and offer scheduled weekend activity once a month. I'd be happy to take any questions on the contract with Prolog.
Any questions on the Prolog contract? None, okay. Do you want to go on to the Community Solutions?
Yes, the administration is seeking your approval for a contract with Community Solutions as this is to provide multi-systemic therapy for youth and young adults aged 17 through 24 that have been diagnosed with a serious behavioral health disorder. This will be extensive involvement with juvenile and adult, or have had extensive involvement with the juvenile and adult justice system. This also commences, this contract commences July 1 and will continue through June 30 of 2026. The initial one-year term will have extended initial term and a renewal option for 90 days. The total amount will not exceed $703,890. The total estimated compensation for the entire five years will not exceed $3,519,450. The multi-systemic therapy for emerging adults is a collaborative program with the Department of Juvenile Services, the County Social Services, and the County Bureau of Behavioral Health. The funding is coming from the Governor's Office for Children, and it's passed through through our local management board. Happy to take any questions on MST.
Any questions on MST? Okay, go on to St. Vincent de Paul of Baltimore for emergency residential shelters at Hannah Moore and Eastern Family Resource Center.
So, the administration is seeking your approval for a contract with St. Vincent de Paul to administer and operate our emergency residential shelter at Eastern Family Resource Center and Hannah Moore Shelter. Also, contract commencing July 1 through June 30. The compensation, the estimated compensation will not, for the one-year term, will be The contractor will be providing services which include janitorial services, wraparound services, the... In addition, they will also coordinate services for residents in order to meet goals in a system when transitioning to self-sufficiency, case management, health, mental health care, and employment, transportation services, and also, we have a, services for young, the school-aged children within the Eastern Family Resource Center. The shelter will also serve as the freezing weather shelter between the months of November and April 15. During the activation of a code blue, we will provide additional beds in the Eastern Family Resource Center. So, happy to take any questions on our contract with St. Vincent de Paul for homeless shelter services.
Any questions from the members? Mr. Richardson, is the Eastern Family, Family Resource Center, is that currently managed by CAND?
Yes.
So, this, this will be a change to...
Correct.
Vincent de Paul?
Yes, this, the contract was competitively bid. Both Community Assistance Network and St. Vincent de Paul bid, and St. Vincent de Paul did receive the contract for this year.
Have they, have they run our, any of our shelters before?
Yes, they are, they are currently running two shelters now.
Okay, so they're just taking over the Eastern Resource Center?
Correct.
All right, and then, Councilman Jones, did you have... No, I have no more questions, sorry.
No, I guess had one quick question. I noticed you said they both bid. Is my understanding that CAND was the lowest bid?
I would, I would have to take a look at that and get back to you, but they might have been as far as in cost, but there were several other factors that we use to determine the best for this actual contract, the best offer. This contract included, as I mentioned, the wraparound services, so those were some of the, some of the things that helped St. Vincent de Paul get the bid.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Patoka? Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. Just want to share with my colleagues, St. Vincent de Paul does have a shelter in District 2, and it seems to be run in a, in a satisfactory way. Great, thank you. And then, we have one more contract from, from Community Assistance Network, CAND, on the emergency residential shelter on West Side.
Correct. We are seeking your approval for Community Assistance Network to operate the West Side Shelter in Catansville. This is the initial one-year terms for $1,944,193 with four one-year renewals. Our estimated compensation will total $9,729,65 for the entire five-year, six-month term of the contract. The, the Community Assistance Network will be operating the West Side Shelter in Catansville and providing the services, also the same services as we mentioned earlier. So, West Side Men's Shelter will be providing janitorial services, intake assessment, case management, food preparation, and janitorial services for West Side Shelter.
Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll preface this saying that this is also a conversation I need to have with CAND, but figured I'd ask. We're renewing the contract, has there been any discussion about the sale of the Spring Grove property to UMBC two years ago related to the future of operations?
I'm not aware of any contract. This is technically not a renewal. This is essentially a new contract due to the new services that are being provided.
Okay, got it. Well, I'll follow up with CAND, I was just curious since we were talking about it. It has been brought up from the UMBC side, but hadn't had a chance to have a conversation with CAND about how they implement, the services being implemented and the services being provided, if there's any sort of discussion or change or expectation over the next, well, 20 years that they have renewals for their lease, but yeah, interesting to have the conversation with you, too, if you have any insight.
Yeah, I can, I can look into that. I have not heard of any discussions so far with anyone in Spring Grove.
Appreciate it, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Councilman Young. Councilman Jones, did you, okay, your mic's, I just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you, Mr. Richardson, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Martin, Director of OIT, on some more CAT agreement, CATS Doing a lot of CATS Plus.
This is the last one, I promise.
I'm good.
Good evening, council members. Council Chair, thank you. So, this is the last time I'm up here, hopefully, for the CATS agreements. This is a fiscal matter for the county to establish a cooperative agreement utilizing the State of Maryland Department of Information Technology Consulting and Technical Services for staffing solutions as needed. The contractor shall provide these services for supplemental staff engagements using one or more of the 115 labor categories. The county solicited a TO RFP to all the master contractors under the State of Maryland CATS Plus master contract incorporating additional requirements as required by Baltimore County, Maryland. And the history is, in 2016, the county issued another RFP, P145, for information technology consulting and technical services. 24 contracts were awarded at that time, all of which had a seven-year term with one 120-day period renewal option, and so that, you know, we're, we're trying to continue services under this new one to replace that. The contracts will become effective when executed by the county and shall continue through April 21, 2028, the initial term. Incumbrances will be made whenever staffing solution services are procured as part of the TO RFP. A purchase order will be issued to the awarded contractor at the time with the funding information. And so, 88 total have already been approved via three council sessions. This specific one has 25. It was 26, but one was not in good standing by the due time, and this is the last set. So, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Martin? All right, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. All right, we're on to bills for first consideration. First up is Bill 3925 from Councilman Marks, addition to the Baltimore County Final Landmarks List, Perry Hall Mansion.
Not the Perry Hall Mansion.
Oh, the other one.
Perry Hall Mansion's already on.
Oh, good.
Yes, yeah, Perry Hall Mansion's already...
The school.
Yes, that's correct. So, we had a, we had a public hearing two weeks ago on this, and there was no one opposed. This legislation would amend the final landmarks list by adding the Perry Hall School at 9317 Bel Air Road, and this is a very fitting addition to this registry since Perry Hall is celebrating its 250th anniversary. This was a school that was constructed in the 1920s, about a century ago, remained in operation until 1956, and then later in the 1970s as an annex. But it's a, it's a splendid building, it's got good bones, as they say, and I'm very happy that all the stakeholders, including the property owners, support the final designation. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any questions for Councilman Marks on this bill? We haven't, we don't have any speakers, do we? Okay. Next up, we have Bill 4025, also from Councilman Marks, assisted living facilities, conversion of existing commercial buildings.
Very good, thank you very much. Bill 4025 would allow building, an older building constructed prior to 1950 to be converted for use as an assisted living facility as long as it meets certain criterias, primarily that it's located within a commercial revitalization district. The, the bill has county-wide applicability, but in my opinion, this is the type of multifamily housing that we do want to be encouraging in revitalization districts. I'm certainly open to any amendments over the next month as we consider the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any questions for... All right, next up, we also have another bill from Councilman Marks, Bill 4125, residential development proposals in the Honey Go overlay district.
Thank you very much. The Honey Go district is an area of northeastern Perry Hall, was established by the County Council in the mid-1990s as a place of more rigid design criteria and adequate facilities. This bill would modify in part the open space requirements so that land could be dedicated to Baltimore County if the land is adjacent to an existing park. There are quite a few parks actually in the Honey Go area, I think at least six of them. This provides some more flexibility to developers. This proposal has been run by the Perry Home Program Association. Again, I'm happy to consider any amendments over the next month.
Any questions from the members? Bill 4225, also from Councilman Marks, this is one of my favorite, out-of-water storage facilities for commercial fishing and shell fishing operations.
Thank you very much. Bill 4225 permits the storage of certain equipment related to commercial fishing or shell shelling fishing operations or businesses under certain conditions. Any residents living with the, within the waterfront areas of Baltimore County own or operate a commercial fishing or shell fishing facility. Many times, it becomes necessary to store gear and equipment related to the commercial filling, fishing or shell fish fishing operation out of the water nor land. These storage, these properties often have very limited storage options, with residents generally having to locate their gear in the front yards and other areas of their waterfront property, which can lead to bulkly unsightly, unsightly conditions. Bill 4225 allows a property where commercial fishing or shell fishing operations located to store the gear, equipment, or other items associated with these enterprises on a separate property, including a vacant lot, provided that it's, was established by special exception. There's been an approved use permit and granted illegal non-conforming use, and there is an associated site plan. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilman Marks on this bill? And there's two witnesses. Councilman Marks, would you be able to, with a golf cart, can you transport? Since we can go on the roads down there with...
You can go on the roads?
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't...
Your district, you can go on the roads.
It wouldn't be a lot of traps on a golf cart, most likely.
Only in, only in the areas of the pilot program, only in the areas.
So far, exactly.
There's only a finite number, yes.
Maybe they can develop a, a cart that can... Mr. Chair, before we have speakers?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just, Councilman Marks, thank you for discussing this bill with me, and I think it certainly has merit, and I appreciate your willingness to provide a thoughtful approach to possible amendments on this, and we do have some time to discuss the bill more, so I appreciate that. And before, when, when you brought up midges, I certainly was not making light of the issue when I said you're welcome, but this is something, you know, it's for the residences, residents that live on the water and the businesses that are on the water, this is something that I've dealt with for 11 years, and the county has worked out a program in partnership with the state to treat Back River with larvicide. It is a program that has been working well. These insects are something that will never completely go away. The, the treatment program is to attempt to mitigate their pure numbers, and they, they've had an economic impact in the 7th District where marinas have lost business because boat owners don't want to keep a marina, keep their boat in a marina where they cannot sit on their boat comfortably without being swarmed by these nuisance insects. So, it is, it is a, it, it's not a funny issue at all, especially if you live on the water, and if you've experienced these insects flying in your ears, in your nose. I've had constituents that go out on their pier in a beekeeping mask, simply because they are basically attacked by what a lot of people call gnats, but they're not gnats, they're, they're midflies. So, I, I do appreciate the administration jumping on this and contacting the state. It seems like we're going to need additional support as the insects seem to be spreading northward, northward along our, our waterfront.
Councilman Patoka? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Crandall, my wife is from the South, and she often refers to a bug that she calls a noceum. Is a noceum a midge?
No, you can see them.
Okay.
You could definitely see them, and I can share pictures and video of the infestation on Back River, which was much, much worse years ago before any action was taken. on Back River, which was much, much worse years ago before any action was taken. They also can leave a green slime on the gel coat of boats that is extremely difficult to get off of boats. So there can be property damage associated with these things. So.
It doesn't sound like a noceum.
Pretty bad. They're pretty bad. I just, I told Councilman Marks that we're, you know, we're asked to consider a bunch of bats. Bats are a predator of midflies. So we're in bat season. Maybe we need some bat boxes.
Bat boxes.
Which are scary to a lot of people. So it's a really, really tough issue.
You can see them, and they're nasty and ugly.
And each one lays a thousand eggs.
Yeah. All right.
Well, and just to go a little further, I know we discussed this a little further, but just so everyone knows, I mean, the program that the county and state have entered into is not an inexpensive program. It, Madam C.A.O., I see you nodding. I forget the exact number. Kevin, do you know off the top of your head? Right. And so the larvicide, it's not a spray. It's actually a larvicide pellet that only kills these insects. It doesn't affect any other vegetation or aquatic animals. And the pellets need to be delivered by helicopter, which certainly adds to the cost. And then one other consideration that I mentioned to you all earlier was that there, to my knowledge, there is only one manufacturer of this particular larvicide in the country. And their largest customers take up a bulk of what they are able to manufacture every year. This is, these infestations are worldwide, and so it's not unique to Baltimore County. And I think what we're fighting here, I don't know, I think Dr. Kevin Brittingham, our bug guy in Baltimore County, can speak to this more eloquently and better than I can. But the, we're kind of in a battle with Mother Nature, in that if weather conditions and nutrient conditions are good for these insects in the water, they tend to breed and swarm in the numbers that we're starting to see spreading into the, spreading northward out of the 7th and up toward Bowley's and Bird River, yeah, that far north.
And as you said, Councilman Crandall, it's not funny until you, it's funny until you deal with them. And, you know, the other thing about the waterfront is that's a, it's a major economic driver in the county, especially in the summertime, and if you have restaurants that.
Absolutely.
People don't want to go to, or.
There's an economic impact. There's a quality of life impact. When you can't sit outside your home to enjoy the sunset, that is a quality of life issue. And people are literally trapped in their homes because they can't walk into their yards to just enjoy being outside on the water.
Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Back to Bill 4225. We have some speakers. Ms. Bel Castro, first speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. I'm assuming this is the person who registered. They only have their first name on. The first speaker is Bill Bissell. Mr. Bissell?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name's Bill Bissell. I'm a resident of Bowley's Quarters since 1994, and I live and work in Bowley's Quarters, making my living on the waterfront. I want to thank you all for the help with these insect as well. But as far as this crab pot legislation goes, I'd like to testify in favor of the proposed legislation to allow commercial watermen to store their equipment within a reasonable distance from their established crabbing business. This new area will consist of a landscape plan to help screen the crab pots while they are stored. The existing storage of crab pots often takes up from property line to property line, affecting the neighbors, and mainly affecting their property values. So in my mind, the neighboring properties will probably be the ones who benefit the most from this legislation, not having to deal with crab pots in their neighbor's front yard for half the year. So this legislation, once again, in my opinion, will help keep crabbing viable in eastern Baltimore County for families for generations to come. Thanks so much.
Councilman Marks.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Ms. Bissell. We appreciate you hanging in with us. We have one more speaker on this matter, Ms. Bel Castro.
Yes, our next speaker is Dave Conrad. Mr. Conrad, you're on, and you may begin your testimony.
Let's see if we can. He might be dealing with midges. By the way, I wanted to give a shout-out tonight. Ms. Erwin is not with us tonight because she's with her, her son graduated from Eastern Tech this afternoon. And Ms. Carrie Vivian is sitting in in her place, so we appreciate you being here and subbing for Ms. Erwin. I don't know if he knows he's on. Mr. Conrad, I think you're muted.
We can hear you, Mr. Conrad.
Were his mics disabled?
Does that bring back David? Is our volume down?
Or is our volume down?
Our volume is up because he's the first one to talk. No, he's not.
You could put it up to the mic. Just put him up the, yeah.
All right. Good afternoon. Sorry for the difficulty there. My name is Dave Conrad. I'm a resident business owner of Middle River. I'm here to speak in support of proposed Bill 4225, the out-of-water storage facilities for commercial fishing and shellfish operations. I think this bill's proposed is important because it helps preserve a key component of our waterfront communities, which is our commercial watermen. Watermen in Baltimore County are typically multi-generational, small family-owned businesses that are deeply rooted in the communities where they both operate or reside. So because these watermen and their operations are uniquely woven into the fabric of our peninsula neighborhoods, I think it's important that we support ways in which we can purge these businesses to remain within our communities, both now and for the future. I think this bill provides a balanced approach to this goal. It allows watermen the much-needed flexibility for storage of equipment while also providing a strong framework of checks and balances for the surrounding residential communities and adjacent properties where these businesses are located. I would just like to thank the council for the opportunity to have this discussion. Of course, Councilman Marks for forwarding legislation. I appreciate the conversations that both Councilman Artel and Crandall and Councilman Marks had with regards to the midges as well. We really appreciate the support and the focus on our waterfront communities. In closing, I'm not, most of you know I'm not a commercial waterman, but I do, you know, my wife and I operate a fifth-generation, family-owned waterfront catering facility in eastern Baltimore County and Middle River. And what I can tell you is that, you know, the small family-owned businesses are what really make our peninsula communities unique, so that I hope you'll take kind of all that into consideration as you kind of weigh the merits of this legislation as it moves through the next work session and then the final vote. I'll take any questions. I appreciate your time.
Any questions for Mr. Conrad? Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Glad we could patch in. All right. Next up, we have Bill 3125 from Councilman Jones, One-Time Use Plastic Carry-Out Bag Reduction Educational, Environmental Education Enhancement Fund. It's a lot of ease.
Yep. I'll be real brief. I know we've been over this before. This bill basically will create an education fund, or a fund where when we pay the one-time, when we pay the five cents for a paper bag, Baltimore County would take 40% of that, which will be two cents, and the retailer will keep three cents. And we would take the money and create a fund that can be tapped into by nonprofits and citizens alike to do environmental work in Baltimore County, whether it be education, whether it be cleanups, you name it. It would be a place where citizens could come, and there'll be a process set up, and they can receive a grant from the funds that we collect, all in an effort of doing more with that money in terms of cleaning up the environment. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any questions for Councilman Jones on Bill 3125?
We have one speaker.
Oh, we have a speaker?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good.
Our speaker is Sharonda Huffman. Oh, you're here in person.
Ms. Hoffman, how are you?
Thank you. I'm gonna take my three minutes and talk about all the things I want to talk about in three minutes. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, Chair Artel and the rest of the council. I did review the proposed bag of fee allocation. It's not a new tax. It's a common sense way to ensure that a few cents collected from disposal bag sales are reinvested into environmental initiatives right here in our communities. I remember when my son was young, the school wasn't open anymore, but one of the things I used to do was they had elementary environmental science, and I think this would be a great opportunity. I did look at the fiscal note, and I know there are some startup costs to have this, but it might be a great long-term investment, as well as, you know, I want to thank Councilman Crandall. He found some money in the budget for that golf course. It sounds like y'all found some more money from some extra funds. So there's a lot of opportunities. Hopefully, he can work with the executive, county executives to get some more money. The other issue, I might have missed it, but I wanted to make sure that we lift up that there were three items on the agendas for the housing choice vouchers, as well as vouchers for people with disabilities, as well as persons who are veterans. My only concern is, I did send something to the council earlier today, is that HUD has indicated that there should be backup plans for any increases to voucher programs, and I forwarded that. I do have the opportunity each week. I attend the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials meetings and get the emails. So I have a deep concern that we need a backup plan just in case HUD does not approve the increases for cost of living. And the last item, I want to thank Councilman Young for taking the initiative to talk about Medicare for All. I was a proponent of it, but I wasn't sure how you can pay for it. I'm very scared for all the people who are on Medicaid. I have talked to various people. When you have a one-pay attack system for insurance, there is, you know, you have different risks. So you have seniors that are of higher risk, that don't have more medical expenses. When you have a one system for everyone, the younger people probably won't need their insurance as much if you go to other countries. You know, I am concerned that, you know, we are now sacrificing the health of individuals in order to make a buck. And I'm also concerned, as a person who used to work with the population of people who have been unemployed for more than five years and were getting substance from money, you know, one of the biggest barriers to employment is having a disability, and that is my profession. So I often talk to new people who just started. A lot of times, they have to take off work because they didn't have insurance. They were waiting to get a good job with a health insurance in order to go to the doctor. Then they find out they're sick, and then they come to me for a reasonable accommodation. So I just want you to lift all those things up, and I don't have anything else to say. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Councilman Crandall?
Thanks, Ms. Hoffman. I just wanted to be clear on something. When the council cut that money from Rocky Point Golf Course, we actually didn't find any money. We just cut it.
Right.
And I think that our director would, Director Reed would probably agree with me. We basically said it's $6.6 million that you cannot spend. So unfortunately, we can't move money from, as you know, we can't move money from a cut to another place in the budget. We don't have that authority.
Well, I'm just looking it up to the county executive and our C.A.O. over here. You know, we just were speaking into existence.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anything? Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Resolution 2825 from Councilman Young, South Frederick Road Commercial Revitalization District. Councilman Young?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So stated earlier, the South Rolling Road, sorry, South Frederick Road Revitalization District, this is an area that's on the corner of Baltimore County that borders the river and Elegant City. I'll point out that this has been an ongoing conversation with the business owners and community members on that side of town because since the two floods that happened in Elegant City, it was unfortunate that a lot of the effort and a lot of the attention and a lot of the financial support for rebuilding went to Howard County. And to be very clear, that's not knocking Howard County. They should try and receive everything they need when it comes to a disaster. But when it came to what we needed in our side of town and on our side of the river, the attention went to the area that was, that got the news attention, that got the, that had the biggest impact, and understandably so, we didn't have as many businesses on our side of town. However, when it came to rebuilding, when it came to trying and obtaining federal funds, getting the same amount of attention as well as support from the federal government as well the state, it was a footnote. So we are limited in terms of what the county has available for resources and for tools to, one, support commercial districts when it comes to preparing for and spurring interest in particular areas. One of those tools, or the only tool we really have, is the commercial revitalization district. So after meeting with a number of the businesses that were affected in those past floods, as well as the folks that are currently operating there now, it was determined that this would be a positive move in the right direction to support them, support their efforts, and prepare for any future unintended, I don't want to say disasters, but any unintended events that might occur in that region. So I'm bringing forth what's been similar to this council's passed in the past, the CRD, that covers a specific area that historically has been a commercial area, but now would be ripe for development, as well as taking advantage of the fact that in Howard County and in Elegant City, there is a substantial effort to redevelop the area that's directly across the street, excuse me, directly across the river and right across the bridge. So I have to answer any questions and urge a favorable report.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Any questions for Councilman Young, or Resolution 2825?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You're up again with Resolution 2925, Support for Healthcare for All Initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and appreciate the conversation with a number of the members before tonight. So this has been something the office has been working on since, I'd say, January. It was brought to my attention from constituents, from folks around Baltimore County, and there have been multiple iterations of the federal bill that this bill references. There wasn't one in 2025, so we put a pin in it and decided to work on the language. We'd be, if we were to support this as a council and pass it, we'd be the eighth jurisdiction in Maryland. I'll list off the other five. Five were counties, the other, there were two that were municipalities, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Charles County, Anarundale County, Frederick County, as well as City of Annapolis and Baltimore City. Now, I'm not saying that because, look at them, we should do it too. Now, I'm not saying that because, look at them, we should do it too. In our conversations, this is really a discussion about healthcare. Serving four years, excuse me, serving eight years on the Appropriations Committee, on the Health and Social Services Subcommittee, we dealt extensively with mental health and the Department of, and the Department of Health, dealing with, from an appropriations and budget standpoint, how do we handle these issues that we're seeing when it comes to mental health in the state? How are we dealing with issues that our ER departments are dealing with across, not just Maryland, but across the entire country? And what tools do we have to address them? I would say that on a, what deals with us and what we're dealing with, we consistently hear from our first responders, our nurses in the, in our EDs, and from our medical professionals, folks are using our emergency departments as primary care services when it comes to things like asthma that don't necessarily need to be treated in the ER, but they're going there anyway because they're afraid of how much it would cost to go somewhere else, or they don't have health insurance, so they don't have other options. When it comes to things in mental health that they don't have another option for, or family members that don't know where to take their family because they don't have health insurance, or they don't, or they're afraid that the cost of trying to receive or access mental health services can't be provided for unless they go to an emergency room, and choosing that avenue because it's the one that's in front of them because they don't have necessarily health, necessary health insurance. I would admit from the conversations that we've had that this is an imperfect bill. I say that the bill that's in front of us in terms of the federal government and the federal legislation. I think, being on this council, I think we're all familiar with imperfect legislation. What is also imperfect is our healthcare system. I'm not waiting for, and I'm not asking for anyone else to wait for, the perfect piece of legislation to try and address this. I know that there are considerable concerns related to what this could mean, related to tax incentives, or the tax on certain folks, even if it will reduce certain, certain costs per month in other ways, but increase potential taxes from the federal government, and two, in terms of covering this if it were to pass. It hasn't passed the federal government before, and as we know, these resolutions are generally intended to be a show of support in concept, a show and support in terms of what we believe the end result should be, which would be an easier access and an easier field in which folks across Baltimore County, across the country, could receive and access healthcare. I had, and if you would, just belabor me, two personal stories, or one personal story that ties to another. I had a friend in my family, and I won't want to go into, I didn't ask to use this story. Their brother had, was suffering from a debilitating illness where their mother was having to take care of them full-time. They were unaware of the fact that they could access benefits through the federal government because they had been working up until that point where they could be paid as a caregiver. I only knew about this because I served on the Medicaid Advisory Committee and was able to kind of help navigate them through the right folks to talk to to access it. But before we even got to that point, and I was asking for how I could help, they were like, they said that there was nothing that I could do, that they were not rich, that they didn't have means, they were not folks that could prepare or be ready for a situation like this. And I didn't, at the time, it wasn't the right time to say this, but that was the mentality, that you had to be rich in order to be able to handle that uncertainty, that you had to have means in order to deal with a family issue or a loved one because they didn't have the health insurance necessary, or a plan that was necessary to deal with that, that, I'm trying not to say what it was that he was suffering from, dealing with the ailment that he was ailing from. They were wrong in the sense that even folks that are rich or have means also are suffering from the inability to cover health costs. And I bring up the anecdote, and not that it's a personal story, but the one of the folks that were married for 30 years, and the husband was suffering from cancer, and they just, they decided strategically to get divorced so that they wouldn't have to settle the family with medical debt. We've created a, we have some of the greatest healthcare in the entire world. People come here from all over, all over the world to receive healthcare, but we've created a system that makes it harder for regular folks to access. And I don't believe that's fair, and I know that they think generally, I wouldn't, I think that most folks feel that way, and I think that a number of the folks in the council would also believe that it's not fair. It doesn't necessarily mean that you support the federal legislation. I'm putting this out for us to have the discussion, if we wanted to or willing to, to discuss even the language I said before, we've been working on this for, since January. It was five pages. We pared it down, knowing that this is Baltimore County, this isn't Montgomery County, or Prince George's, or Anarundale County. We do things differently here, and I wanted to make sure that what was presented was presented in one that could spur the conversation rather than scuttle one. And I hope that that's what's been presented here, at least, the opportunity to have the conversation related to where I stand on this, but also finding out where you do, and also let you know that I'm open to more changes. It was five pages, or it had been six pages, I pared it down to roughly now, roughly two pages, we added another sentence, but I say that to say that I'm still open to changes before we put this in front of us for a vote. I'd be interested in your input and welcome your, welcome your additions or subtractions. That, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Young. I, I do believe healthcare is a human right, and I think that it is horrible, some of the things that people go through because they don't have healthcare. And I know that tremendous progress has been made with the Affordable Care Act, and I understand that some of those programs, including many of the fundings that's, that's been earmarked for hospitals, are all sort of in flux right now. We'll see what happens. I'm afraid, I hope that I'm wrong, I hope I don't, number one, see a lot of hospitals in rural areas close, or even see for-profits come in. We are very fortunate in this area here where we live. We have several hospitals here in Baltimore County and some other parts of the country. People drive for miles, I mean, like hours, to get to a hospital. So I do believe healthcare is a human right, and I could probably match those horrible stories you gave with more horrible stories that I know, people personally not going to the hospital because they're afraid it's going to bankrupt them, or going to the hospital and becoming bankrupt. So thank you for bringing it forward, and my simple statement is I believe healthcare is a human right, and until we, as a country, catch up with the rest of the industrialized countries in the world and provide healthcare to every citizen, until that happens, we're always going to have this type of thing happen, or this type of sad outcomes. You're right, we are very fortunate, we have the best healthcare, we have the best care in the world for those who can afford it. I've been very fortunate. I've had health insurance, you know, basically all my life. My mother was a schoolteacher, my father worked at Bethlehem Steel. I joined the fire department at 22 years old, had a Cadillac plan, and still have a Cadillac plan today, but I can't help but think about the people who get hit by cars and don't want to go to the hospital because they can't afford it. I've seen these type of things happen time and time again. So, yeah, I think healthcare is a human right, and we need to do everything we can. And if speaking out is one thing we can do, then so be it.
Councilman Padoc?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Young, I appreciate that you've been working on this for many months, since January, I think, from what you said. Couple of weeks ago, I sent you an email to try to get, gain some context onto what your thoughts were on this, and you did not reply. So I decided to read the legislation on my own without the context which you shared this evening, and so with that, I think it's, it's valuable. Mr. Chair, if you could add me as a cosponsor, I'd appreciate, Mr. Secretary, I'm sorry, you're not chair yet, but, Mr. Secretary, could you add me as a cosponsor? Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, members? Okay. I know we have some speakers. Ms. El Castro?
Yes, we do. Our first registered speaker was on the meeting. They were on earlier, but they are no longer on. I don't know if they had to log off. It was Connor Donan, but I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Oh, is he here in person?
Yeah. Thank you. Were you online earlier? I was.
Okay.
It was raining, so I didn't know if I'd make it on time.
Connor, you just sit down at the desk there, the mic's on, and take it away as soon as you're ready.
Brilliant. Saving the best for first, I guess.
Can I quote you on that?
Please don't. Okay. Thank you, members of the council, for having me here today. I'm here to voice my full support for the Medicare for All resolution currently before you. For me, the definition of Medicare for All, single pair healthcare system that guarantees healthcare is a human right for every person regardless of their income, employment, or background. I believe it's time for Baltimore County to take a stand and send a clear message that we believe in this human right and that every person in our community deserves access to it. Right now, there are about 300,000 people in Maryland, 6% of our state's population, who have no health insurance at all, right? Here in Baltimore, that's about 50, Baltimore County is about 51,000 of our neighbors who are uninsured, 51,000 of our neighbors who cannot afford to see a doctor when they're sick, who have to skip medication because it's too costly, who delay care until it's too late, and this disproportionately impacts working-class people and community, minority communities, right? Even people who do have insurance are too often underinsured, paying high premiums, high copays and deductibles, right? Many of the people who have insurance are denied coverage when it matters most, during cancer treatment, emergencies, or when they have chronic illnesses. About 20% of cases of in-network coverage are denied by insurers, 33% of out-of-network cases are denied. Forty to 80,000 people in this country die every year because they don't have access to insurance because it's been denied to them, including around about 470 people per year in Maryland. Those people are people who had insurance, but they were left footing the bill, right? The, this footing the bill can often lead to medical poverty, medical debt, which is one of the biggest debts in this state and in this country. 14% of Marylanders carry medical debt. Many of our young people especially, who are coming out of college, don't have a job yet, are impacted by a lack of healthcare. This leads to greater anxiety, depression, issues that go untreated for a long time. And this problem could get worse based on the current budget bill, which estimates that between 60 and 130,000 Marylanders will lose their Medicaid coverage. Our neighbors in other counties have passed similar resolutions. I believe Medicare for All is a moral imperative. I ask you to support it today and to show to people of Baltimore County that we believe no one should go without healthcare in the wealthiest state in America. Thank you all for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Crandall?
I just wanted to make a comment. I don't, I don't have anything directly for Mr. Donan.
Makes my life easier.
Councilman Young, I want to thank you. You brought this legislation to me a couple of weeks ago, at least, and you said that, exactly what you said today, that you wanted to create a conversation around this issue. I think you've accomplished your, your goal on that, and I know that your intention, and you stated this to me as well, your intention was not to cause a partisan fight up here on the dais and a bunch of argument. So I don't want to enter into any of that. Just a couple of questions. So you, you've stated that this, this legislation has failed a couple of times in Congress?
Federal version's failed a couple of times, yeah.
Okay. The, when it has failed, was it actually brought to the floor for a vote?
Actually, that's a good point. I don't believe it was, I don't believe it was brought up for a vote. I think it just failed because it was not brought up and it died into the next year. I think it's one of those pieces of legislation that sat.
And there's a lot that do, that's it.
There's a lot. It was one of the...
Right. So, I mean, are you aware of bipartisan support for the legislation in Congress, or, my question, if you, if we knew that it went to a vote, or it was, or it failed in committee, then would, would we, did it fail along partisan lines? You see where I'm heading?
Right, I do, and I, I believe that since its first iteration, it was pretty, just along partisan lines. I believe that there are cosponsors of the legislation that are from both parties, but if you allow me, I'll confirm that and get, and get who those folks are to you, so I don't just speak out of the side of my mouth, but I do believe that this new iteration has been, or at least they've pursued bipartisan support. I think they've always pursued bipartisan support, but I think this actually received some, but I don't have exactly the names or which jurisdictions they were from. So I can find that for you and let you know.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Councilman Young? Thank you, sir.
Good.
Yep. Ms. El Castro, next speaker.
Next speaker is Elijah Sharp, who is on virtually. Mr. Sharp, you may begin your testimony when you're ready.
Mr. Sharp, you're up. Good afternoon, good evening, I should say.
Hello. Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Hey, folks. My name is Elijah Sharp. I am a lifeline Baltimore County resident, student, and worker. As a recent graduate of UMBC, finding a full-time job, let alone one that provides good benefits, has been pretty difficult. I have a couple of years left on my parents' insurance, after which I'll need to either rely on employer-sponsored insurance, otherwise purchase a plan, or rely on means tested government programs like Medicaid that are obviously facing massive cuts and straining state budgets. Also being the son of two self-employed individuals without their own personal HR departments to adjudicate the mess of an enrollment period, I've witnessed quite a few private insurance horror stories. After seeing my dad writhing on the floor because of pain caused by his gallbladder, my mom took him to a hospital. We knew that because of complications caused by the private insurance system and unemployment during COVID, our insurance wouldn't cover what would have been a bill costing us thousands of dollars we didn't have. We had the cosmic luck of him landing at a Catholic hospital with an internal charity established to help people in situations like ours, but I can't help but think about all those who couldn't get a bed at St. Agnes, people who had just as random an emergency as my dad but couldn't rely on charity. How many of them have died because they waited to incur immense medical debt until it was too late? Because of this story and many others, I urge you to pass this resolution. Medicare for All would create a national health insurance program, ending insurance delays and denials by covering all medically necessary care and giving patients the freedom to choose their doctor. It would remove employment, age, and marital status as barriers to receiving healthcare. It would end medical bankruptcy and save money for Baltimore County families by eliminating insurance premiums and deductibles and cutting immense financial waste incurred by excessive administrative costs. But why should you care in your capacity as county councilman? First, rising healthcare costs have drained local government budgets of the resources they need to rebuild and restore the vitality of their communities. Across the nation, increasing shares of the budget carved out for fire protection, schools, parks and rec, and other basic functions are needed to meet health benefit costs. Healthcare is nearly always at the top of the list of collective bargaining agreements with local government employees. Many local governments have to have, have to hire healthcare consultants to help them examine and cut out plan changes that are presented to unions in an attempt to control costs. Also, Medicare for All would increase the well-being of all the residents in your community by keeping people healthier, ending the risk of falling into debt or facing bankruptcy due to medical expenses. Baltimore County is often responsible for providing frontline responses for those who fall into poverty due to medical debt-related bankruptcies. Also, as a result of reticence to receive preventative care, as Councilman Young noted, tens of thousands of uninsured Baltimore County residents are more likely to end up using the emergency rooms than those with insurance, and local governments are often footing that bill. The same is true for local social services, for people experiencing homelessness, under substance use disorders, et cetera. Finally, Medicare for All would also end the burden on local entrepreneurs and employers to provide health insurance as a condition of employment that would free up entrepreneurs to pursue their business ideas without fear of risking the loss of their health insurance at their current job, but let them start businesses without being concerned about having the capital to offer a health insurance plan to their prospective employees, things like that. Thank you for listening. I hope you vote for Resolution 2925.
Councilman Young, did you want?
Just want to say thank you. Thank you, a pleasure.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next speaker, Ms. El Castro.
Our next speaker... Our next speaker is Lauren Noel, who is on virtually. Ms. Noel, you may begin your testimony.
All right, so I'm feeding your baby, but, um, one second. All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Councilman. My name is Lauren Noel. I'm a registered nurse who works in a cardiac surgery step-down unit at Johns Hopkins. However, I'm not here representing Hopkins today. I'm here as a Parkville resident, as a nurse, and as a mom, to urge you to vote yes on the Medicare for All resolution. I am here to advocate for my patients, our community members, our friends, our family members. Showing your support for Medicare for All means showing that you care about the thousands of Baltimore County residents who are burdened by the cost of healthcare or the lack of guaranteed access to healthcare. I can tell you one thing, heart disease, it does not discriminate, it affects all people. Due to high costs of healthcare, my uninsured and underinsured patients often forego preventative care, which unfortunately leads to undiagnosed heart disease and even larger costs when the patients require open heart surgery, followed by a four to six-day hospital stay, or even longer. When patients get to this point, they often require an ambulance ride to the hospital. The ambulance fees for uninsured and underinsured patients are covered by the county. Medicare for All would allow people to seek preventative healthcare without breaking the bank. On top of this, it would save the county money because the county would no longer be responsible for covering the ambulance costs for uninsured patients. In the long run, Medicare for All will save us money. Nursing aside, I'm facing steep medical bills from the birth of my second child that I had in January. My insurance company does not want to cover a single cent of my son's hospital bill, and even after insurance, my bill is over $1,800. This doesn't include prenatal care, any kind of visits to the hospital. I know what you're thinking, what does Medicare for All have to do with Baltimore County? With Medicare for All, people would have health insurance to visit their primary care doctors instead of going to the emergency department for non-emergent medical issues. This would reduce the wait times of our emergency departments, which is a serious problem that we have in Maryland, being that we have the longest emergency department wait times in the United States, with Franklin Square Hospital here in Baltimore County being among the longest wait times. In conclusion, I urge you to vote yes on the Medicare for All resolution as a means to improve patient care and outcomes, promote healthier residents through preventative care, and to cut healthcare costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noel.
Thank you, Ms. Noel. Any questions for Ms. Noel? All right, thank you. Ms. Bell Castro, next speaker.
Our final speaker for this item is Ian Miller. Mr. Miller, you are on as a panelist, you may begin your testimony.
Hi, it's great to be here. My name is Ian Miller, and I'm the president of the Baltimore County Young Democrats, and I'm here representing our organization and forcefully voicing our support on this resolution because healthcare is a fundamental human right, is not a privilege. Yet far too many people in our community delay or forego care because of costs, fall into crippling medical debt, or are forced to choose between medicine and their groceries or gas. Eighty-five million Americans are uninsured or underinsured, and this is an embarrassing figure. Life expectancy, expectancy is actually decreasing in this country, and this is a major reason why. When we look at our neighbors around us, life expectancy is increasing in Canada, Mexico, and Cuba, all of our neighbors that have embraced a universal healthcare model. So I'm here testifying in favor of Medicare for All resolution because as a society, we should be better than this, and we should have the pride to say that we must be better than this, that we should care enough about our fellow Americans to say that in the wealthiest country in the history of the world, it's a moral travesty that 60,000 of our co-patriots die every single year because of a lack of healthcare access. Those are 60,000 preventable deaths of our friends, family, neighbors, and coworkers. Also greedy healthcare CEOs can make record profits. The bottom line is people don't choose when they get sick, but as a society, we choose not to guarantee them dignity when they do. We've normalized cruelty in the name of individual profit at the expense of the collective good. And I think we should take the same stand that Baltimore City, Montgomery County, Anna Rundle County, and Prince George's County have taken in the passage of a Medicare for All resolution bill. This is a moral imperative, and I think that, at the end of the day, universal healthcare is about ensuring that our residents have the freedom and opportunity to reach their full potential, and that we as a community are better off when we are all healthier. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Counselman Marks.
I just want to thank Councilman Young for his, his testimony. There are three Republicans on this council, and I thought you approached this in a very nonpartisan way, very genuine way, and I appreciated that, so thank you.
Thank you, Count.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Counselman Catch.
As many of you know, like Counselman Young, I was in the state legislature and served on the Health and Government Operations Committee and Economic Matters when we, and we had all these health issues. And let me just say that Maryland is probably in the top five in this country as far as healthcare, health insurance, et cetera. On our committee, we always tried to work to reduce the cost of health insurance for consumers. We were always fighting certain insurance companies, and I'll mention one, United Healthcare, that we were always fighting them, they would reject a claim from an individual, and then we would have to change the law so that they would, you know, they would pay for the procedure. We expanded Medicaid as a state early on, this was 20-some years ago, and let me just tell you something that we did. We mandated the bypass surgery for weight loss. And you might think, well, that, that's a waste of money, why would you pay for something like, why would you force insurance companies to pay for something like that? That could probably be controlled by the person, or just so that they feel good about themselves. Well, the end result of that coverage was the insurance company saved money because there were fewer cases of diabetes and other health problems related to weight problems. So there's much that the state of Maryland has done, and I'm sure will do in the future to, to, to address the issue of health insurance and health coverage in Maryland. I know some people have, you know, very worried about it and negative, but as far as this state goes, things, I think, are much better than in most other states. Thank you.
And, Mr. Secretary, I think we've covered it all.
We have, Mr. Chairman. If you'd like, I could very briefly summarize the bills that we still have, but, but that we excused the, the witnesses, or, or not, however the council wants.
Does anyone need a summary of the bills that we didn't cover? We, we, it was not that we didn't cover them, they, these were.
Right, they covered them today.
These were people that testified at the earlier work session.
Yes, sir.
Or, not the earlier work, the last work session.
And they were all current expense budget.
We didn't have a second reading on those.
Right, they were all supplemental appropriations from the current expense budget. They were bills 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, and 3825.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, a meeting is adjourned.